Yeah, yeah, grab me by the back of the neck, grab me by the back of the neck and say, straighten up. Yeah, I know, that's awesome. Oh, this way I can maybe do the same thing.
Appreciate no one knows.
Yes.
Really?
You have no model, but I have a whole bunch of them. Flunked out, whatever they were called. Boys there, Taylor Reed, Bush. Yeah. The Army are involved, so I see. I need, that's whatever. So, I work with the mayor's grant. There's refreshment. 26, 66. Remember, I said, so that kind of thing.
What is it?
Yeah, for three years. I can't.
A little Mecca break.
Yeah. I did it, but those two.
I almost got busted. I tell you, why they're firing. Couldn't get through. No. Why they're synchronized.
Yes, they're synchronized, they're always. That's getting better. Yeah. It's nine o'clock. Unbelievable.
It's changed. Yeah.
No, not her climate. It was not an air thing to do.
Not the air thing.
Anything with heights, I'm out.
Good morning, this meeting of the Berry County Board of Commissioners for October 28th, 2025 is now called to order. Will Commissioner, staff and guests please stand for our invocation and pledge allegiance?
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day in Berry County. We thank you for the change of the seasons. We thank you for this board, for all our constituents. We ask that you guide us and bless us to make the right decisions that have the best impact and benefit for all those we serve. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. For purposes of attendance, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Bassett.
Here.
Carlton.
Here.
Campbells absent, Guddy.
Here.
Hatfield.
Here.
Smokers absent, Tunisson.
Here.
And Jackson.
Here, thank you. Reports from state or county officials, are there any state or county officials with us this morning to like to deliver an update to the board? Hearing on limited public comment at this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Bruce, you've changed. Good morning, Gary White. Item F, I was going to close session to evaluate County Administrator. Going into closed session is not, cannot be at the desire of the commissioners, but must be at the request of the county administrator, just so people know that. So if he hasn't requested it, he can't go into closed session for an evaluation. On the budget and things that you're going to be looking at today, living within your means of spending less or equal to the amount of money you earn. Government doesn't earn money, they take money from people and stuff. So when it comes to living within your means, when you have needs that haven't been met, and you want to come back and look at wanting more money from residents, you're not able to live within your means. So it concerns me that when I see the budget and I look through the budget, if you haven't studied the audit, the budget probably means nothing to you. So it's just one of those situations. The budget shows that you're going to be coming and asking for a millage for a jail. You also in your budget show that you're going to get state money. Two state reps have already said you have no money coming from the state to build a jail. That's your responsibility, so I'm not sure why that's in the budget. It also talks about debt of the $20 million or the $50 million you want for that jail. So I'm not sure if you listen to the people, are you representing the people as they have said no? During Maple Grove Township meeting, Mike Carlton said he doesn't believe a millage will pass. Well, why should it pass when it was your responsibility for about two decades now to show that you have the means to build a jail without coming back after the taxpayers once again? So this is a concern, if you pass this budget, and I'll speak more about the budget later on, but it's on your agenda. And it just doesn't make no sense why you would put something in there that the people don't want, have told you that. Your one county commissioner has said he doesn't believe it would pass. Well, if you're representing your people, then you don't vote to have that part of your budget as coming for a millage. So it's going to be interesting to see how you address this budget. I have not cherry picked parts of the budget, because cherries you'd probably want to pick and eat. But I've exposed rotten peaches in your budget. If you have rotten peaches in your budget, then at the same time, those rotten peaches will continue to destroy the rest of the budget. So I guess that's the way I look at this as compared to how other people look at this. I'll be back, thank you, thank you.
Good morning. Sorry, my ADD does not do well. Shelley Lake Irving Township, so I think the way it works, so you have a public hearing and I see that there will be a motion to pass the budget. So I don't know, somehow I missed the previous, the budget workshops and stuff, I'll do better at that. A couple of quick things and I, and because I, I have to get up the nerve to say that both parties, everyone knows I'm a Republican, both parties, Democrats, I've got a lot of Democrat friends, care about spending and care about not having wasteful spending. So to have it part of the Republican platform is not a big deal, just to let you guys know, it's not an attack on commissioners. It's part of a national platform and to say you're going to quit the Republican Party if we pass the platform because of the wasteful spending thing is a little disappointed. Everybody should care about that. And the last thing, so I don't know if this applies to the treasurer, but I know she's struggling, I wouldn't do that job for anything. But I do think that by taking duties away from a treasurer and from a clerk, statutory duties for a new position, instead of making her job easier, maybe we should be working on making her better, because you're creating a new position, it's pretty permanent. So that's just my thought on that, let's make her better instead of her job easier. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Shelley.
Good morning, Chris Stafford, lifetime Berry County resident, coming before you this morning to talk to you about the Career Consortium of Berry County. The Career Consortium is a combination of the Berry ISD's Workforce Connections Meeting merging with the Chambers EDA's Manufacturing Council. The main goal of the consortium is to bring business, industry and education together for workplace pathways for kiddos in schools, which are our greatest asset. With only three minutes, look through the slides, I will first invite you tonight at 5 o'clock at B C E C. There is a much more informative meeting on this topic that we're going countywide. The big thing right now is 30 years ago, the county commissioners passed bonds to build the Pheasant Fell Building. It's a 93.5 acre campus that's being underutilized in our county. Berry County and all the surrounding counties, we're the only county without a career center. With all the ARPA funding that happened, since we didn't have a career center, we lost out on millions of dollars that we could have put a high-tech training equipment in there for the school. in there for the school. So if you look through it, right now with the wonderful state and federal budgets going on, that's a whole different story, CTE deserts in combination with us not having a career center, this will give us more funding models, because all the taxes that we spend, it'd be nice to get some of that back into our county. So if you look through the packet, it explains even though we have a campus, because we're not in the taxing district or KCC, it's not included in any of the state data. We do not have a four-year school. There's no career center. So that's on one of the slides. On another slide, the Berry ISD School Boards had a joint meeting. In that joint meeting, Berry ISD Hastings and Dalton did a survey, and of that survey, 68.1% of the people said, yes, let's do a collaborative career center. 20% of that one's unsure, so hey, let's take 50% of that and let's add, that's almost 80% of the people in Berry County like collaboration, you know? Don't have multiple welding centers at two different schools, you know? It's hard enough to find welders to work, but are you going to work at a school district for, I think the starting salary is $40,800 for a level-one teacher? But, you know, collaborate, if we can get some of these wonderful individuals that are getting ready to retire, that have passion for this, working together works sense, you know? This is for the students, for the schools, and for business and industry. At the ISD level, we have zero money, or zero mills for vocational. We are the lowest ISD in the surrounding districts statewide over 14 years. There's been a decrease in enrollment. So look at the slides, come to the meeting tonight, there'll be a lot more information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris.
B C E C, Leishon Sharp Hall. 5:00.
Joel, it's in Rutland Township, long time no see. You're done with me already?
Three minutes is up, sorry.
Well, I come to you today to ask you guys to actually spend a little bit more money. I know, shock, surprise. I see you guys having, I don't know if it's closed session regarding to contract negotiations with the Sheriff's Office or not, but I do hope that you guys look into our rates versus surrounding counties. We pay our corrections officers and deputies the lowest of any county in southwest Michigan, to my knowledge. That's not something that we should be proud of. And so I hope that when you go into this, that you look at that and say, okay, maybe this, we can look at this, adjust that. I think it'll help our turnover. I'm quite positive that it'll help in situations where you're paying two people to do the same job unnecessarily because of constant training through the revolving door, with deputies coming in, going through the training process, and then going to leave for Kent County to get $10, $15, $20 an hour more in some cases, and five to 10 years earlier retirement than what we have. I think it would be prudent to look into this, and I understand that there's probably some differences between this committee and the sheriff, and sure enough, I've had some of those myself, surprise, surprise. I think we can all set those aside to look at what's good for our county, and I think that is definitely needed. I don't want a revolving door. I want our county to be a place that sheriff deputies and corrections officers can come, commit themselves to a lifetime of service, and a career that will pay the bills, that will put braces on kids' teeth, that will create indestructible family units, that will continue to build upon the legacy that Berry County has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment? Hearing none, we will move ahead. Approval of written agenda at this time, any member of the Board of Commissioners may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration. Hearing no such requests, as any Commissioner wishes to change the agenda additionally? Hearing no such requests, the agenda is approved as written. Various correspondents, as any Commissioner have correspondents they'd like to share with the board? Consent agenda, Commissioner Carlton.
Motion for the approval of the October 14, 2025 Board of Commissioner meeting minutes.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Carlton, support by Tunisson, for all items listed on the consent agenda. Discussion is not allowed, and a roll call vote is required. All those in favor, vote aye. Oppose, vote nay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Bassett.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell's absent.
Gaddy. Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smokers absent.
Tunisson.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Presentations, we have none this morning. Public hearings, we have this morning proposed Berry County 2026 budget with projections for '27 and '28. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak either in favor of or opposition to the budget, now is your time.
Good morning again. I guess I would say I'm in opposition to the budget. We've been watching the County Commissioners come in and give pretty large raises at times to, in reclassification, reclassifying jobs. We even have a proposal to add the job that was just taken away out of the Equalization Department to create a wage. And once again, as I said, in your budget, you're showing that you're going to come and ask for a millage for a jail. Restructuring is a good thing. When you look at all the technology that the county is paying for, seems like the more technology we get, the more people we need to get. Today, on the way in here and stuff with AI, Amazon announced that they're going to reduce 14,000 workers, and a lot of it has to do with the administration. When I looked at your budget and looked at your staffing, I just sit here and look at, there's, sometimes you have, well, specially court program manager, one, specially court caseworker, two. So when you start looking at what costs money, administration costs a lot of money. When you're, I don't know, administration, is that over two people? You have to have one administrator? When it comes to judges, judges are supposed to be even on call during the weekend. When you had the quasi judicial officers, it was said that, well, they're here for the weekends. Well, maybe it's time the judges go back to weekend work. You've got to pay for a jail. The burden should not be put on the taxpayers. Bob, I heard you a while back talk about how taxes went up on your son's parcel property, almost doubled. It doesn't get any better passing budgets like this that you don't make adjustments on. At the last meeting, you put 3% wages into elected officials. I'm pretty sure I heard that you had budgeted 2.5% for increases. If you're already blowing your budget apart two months prior, then it's not a good thing to even consider passing this budget. A public hearing, you should be able to discuss. You're going to pass this, and everybody keeps on saying, well, they're just going to pass it anyways. It doesn't matter what's said, what the concerns are, you're not going to take them into consideration because you've already made your decision. Not restructuring and finding out how you're going to find that $1 million per year to pay for that jail is not right for the people. You have $30 million in this capital outlay, I think is where it's at, that you're not saying how you're going to come, you know? Mike Carlton's saying, I think it's $36 to $45 million for a jail. I don't know, but this has been, once again, for two decades, and many people have been on this board for a decade of it, and still no real plan to pay for the jail that is needed. A millage isn't a real plan. Restructuring is the plan, and when you look at how much money this county has coming in, there's money there to pay for it, but it will take the restructure of how you do this. The tax burden should not be on the people. People can't afford homes, homeownership anymore. I really sort of get tired of listening to, well, we need to have places for people to live. No, we need to have the American dream here, back here in Berry County, and taxes are stopping that. Property taxes, the cost, and then it just keeps on soaring. So I'm not sure why you haven't looked at cutting, except for only adding, and all the technology that you put in. Well, guess what? There's a point in time that the technology needs to pay off. This year, it needs to pay off. You need to restructure how the staffing is, and it may start with the court, because it looks like it's pretty heavy right there. Thank you. Thank you.
First of all, I thank you for allowing me to speak. Just an idea, there's a lot of people in the community who are really smart financially, creative. I think for the next year's budget, why not maybe create a little ad hoc team? What would it hurt to be able to look through things and say, maybe what about if this happened? Might be, might be something to do, and really honestly, what could it hurt to have some fresh eyes look at it? And I'm curious about the 75-plus funds. I don't really understand it, but is there a list anywhere that says how much money and what those funds are for that are sitting there, you know, waiting to be spent? I agree, there's no money coming from the state. I've talked to two of the reps, and they said the voters in the other 82 counties, I'm paraphrasing, should not be responsible to pay for the lack of Berry County being able to manage money. So we can't count on state money. I know that Commissioner Tunisson, you had said Thursday night that if a millage doesn't pass, voters are going to be unhappy, because if the buildings come down, then we're going to have to outsource prisoners to other jails. Not only will people be out of work, but it's going to cost, I can't remember how much more you said, but a lot more for all the transporting and everything. So I think it's really important that we find the money elsewhere than the people. I know we can do it. And then also on the union arbitrations, I, when I was looking at it, it looked like the jail, the Sheriff's Department were offered like 2.5%, a lot of the others were 3. I just am not understanding why they were offered less, and then how much money was spent on the, I'm assuming there's attorney fees for, or union or for arbitration, like how much was spent on that? So do appreciate your efforts, and thanks for listening.
Thank you, Shelley.
I can't help myself. Taxes. Come tonight, the whole idea behind this is business, industry, and education. So 30 years, we're not in a taxing district. It's done, it's over with. You're not going to complain about it. The idea, though, behind what I've been pushing, and most of you know me, is this has to be public, private, and philanthropic to put a career center in Berry County. I'm sick of listening to, what skin in the game do the schools have? What skin in the game does community college have? Well, what skin in the game does business and industry have to support pathways into careers that will establish more people going to work in Berry County? Where housing is going up, yes, it's very expensive. We have more jobs, but if we don't have an educational system that rivals all the surrounding counties, they won't move here. Not having a full-time welding instructor, not having HVAC, you know, not having higher machining programs that kids can go into that fills Bradford White with 1,600 employees. The casino has 1,400 employees, Flex Fab. There's companies looking, and they can't find workers. So kids coming out of school, the graduation rate, I think Hastings was 212, half of them either went into the workforce or no force. We need to entice the kids in having a career center that the five public schools that have four different ISDs in Berry County can all attend would be amazing. And yes, it has to be funded. There's a regional enhancement millage that's coming up that would be for one mill. It's about 1.5 billion, or 1.5 million that would be split between Hastings and Dalton. The split is, I think, 55-45. With that, my goal is every $1 of private money, or public money, is $2 of business, industry, and philanthropy. That's the skin in the game of the schools. So keep listening, talk to the school boards. Once the millage either passes or doesn't pass, they'll sit down and say where the money's going to go. In 30 years, there's not been that all the five public schools have superintendents that have less than three years on the job. They're all talking right now. This is the best time to make something happen, to wipe out 30 years of not being able to do something with that beautiful 93.5 acre campus. It doesn't have almost 300 parking spaces for no reason. But I am agreeing, it has to be funded, and it can't be all on the public's back. My whole mission for the last four years I've been working on this is that exact thing. The public does have to support it. Look at the rates, they're there. We're the lowest at the ISD, no vocational, and philanthropy that built this town, and all the arts. If they want to keep it, we need to have a career pipeline. Thank you. Thank you.
Additional comments for the budget? For or against? One more time, for or against? Okay. Thank you. The proposed public hearing, or the public hearing is now closed for the budget of the 2026 Berry County. Items for consideration. The Chair entertained a motion for approval of the claims in the amount of $120,640.95.
Some moved.
Okay, the board will come back in session. First order of business, the chair would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from closed session.
No move.
Support.
Motion by Carlton, support by Getty for minutes of closed session. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Bassett?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell's absent, Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker's absent, Tunison?
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion of the minutes of closed session are approved. Commissioner Hatfield.
Yes, I would like to make a motion acknowledging the very positive performance evaluation that Eric Zuska received. The performance evaluation was included comments from commissioners, elected officials, direct reports, other staff, as well as select community representatives. On a scale of one to five, ratings generally range from three to four and a half with the average in excess of three and a half. So, overall, it was a very positive evaluation with significant favorable comments received from most of the participants. Given that, I would recommend that we increase Eric's base salary effective 1-1-2016 by three percent. Twenty, excuse me, 2016, sure. 2026.
2026, effective January 1st.
I'm trying to stay young, come on.
Take a decade off, just like-
There you go. Is there support for that motion? All right, motion by Hatfield, support by Tunison. Any discussion? Any comments? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell's absent, Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker's absent, Tunison?
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. Okay, Chairperson's report.
Nothing, sir.
Okay, Chairperson's report. I am good as well. We are at the end of the cycle and at the beginning of it all. So, vice chairperson's report.
I have nothing.
Commissioner reports. Commissioner Bassett.
I have a meeting tonight with Conservation Board, and that's about it.
Okay, Commissioner Carlton.
Nothing.
Commissioner Getty.
I had LDFA last week, they passed their budget. Progress proceeding in the Village of Middleville, they're trying to get a new well set up, and so they're working all of that.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Tunison.
Nothing.
Okay. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Hello there. Contingency. A future event or circumstance which is possible but cannot be predicted with certainty. Well, we can certainly predict the problem with the jail. To continue to say, well, we got to have a 12 to 14 percent contingency really says that you haven't looked at what your need is. You're looking at, once again, over $2 million per year, and you're saying, well, we can't afford a jail without a millage. What is a contingency fund? We heard how we have high fund balances. That was in the other reports. High fund balances, and then if you look at your budget, it says, we need-
Okay, the board will come back in session. First order of business, the chair would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from closed session.
No move.
Support.
Motion by Colton, support by Getty for minutes of closed session. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Bassett.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Kentville's absent, Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker's absent, Tunison.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion of the minutes of closed session are approved. Commissioner Hatfield.
Yes, I would like to make a motion acknowledging the very positive performance evaluation that our Eric Zuska received. The performance evaluation was included comments from commissioners, elected officials, direct reports, other staff, as well as select community representatives. On a scale of one to five, ratings generally range from three to four and a half with the average in excess of three and a half. So overall, it was a very positive evaluation with significant favorable comments received from most of the participants. Given that, I would recommend that we increase Eric's base salary effective 1-1-2016 by 3%. Twenty, excuse me, 20, 2016, sure, 2026.
2026 effective January 1st.
Stay young, come on.
Take a decade off.
There you go. Is there support for that motion? All right, motion by Hatfield, support by Tunison. Any discussion? Any comments? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Carlton.
Aye.
Kentville's absent, Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker's absent, Tunison.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. Thank you, Eric. It's been a good first year, so not without its challenges, but a good first year, so. Moving on with our agenda, unfinished business. We have none. New business, we have none. County administrators report.
Nothing, sir.
Okay, chairpersons report. I am good as well. We are at the end of the cycle and at the beginning of the one, so. Vice chairpersons report.
I have nothing.
Commissioner reports. Commissioner Bassett.
I have a meeting tonight with Conservation Board, and that's about it.
Okay. Commissioner Colton.
Nothing.
Commissioner Getty.
I had LDFA last week. They passed their budget. Progress proceeding in the Village of Middleburg, they're trying to get a new well set up, and so they're working all of that.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Tunison.
Nothing.
Okay. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Contingency, a future event or circumstance which is possible but cannot be predicted with certainty. Well, we can certainly predict the problem with the jail. To continue to say, well, we got to have a 12 to 14 percent contingency really says that you haven't looked at what your need is. You're looking at, once again, over $2 million per year, and you're saying, well, we can't afford a jail without a millage. What is a contingency fund? We heard how we have high fund balances. That was in the reports. High fund balances, and then if you look at your budget, it says, we need to maintain these high fund balances and ignore the needs of the county, which is the jail. We need to put the burden of the jail on the taxpayers to overburden them. So are you going to represent the people and start putting a financial plan together? Because it doesn't matter if you say, well, we got to have a jail, you haven't put a financial plan together that shows that you really have a need for a millage. The contingency tells me you don't have a need for a millage for a jail, you have a want for a millage for a jail. I have a want for lower taxes, or for taxes to stay the same. Your budgets every year increase my taxes, and then you brag about having high fund balances and a double A bond rating as people lose their homes in Berry County for taxes, which is part of your problem if you're supposed, if you, that you're not representing these people. Put the financial plan together. You're, and nobody knows when this jail study is going to come out now. It was canceled, it was supposed to be on the 31st, and there's been no announcement even here today. So I'm just sitting here, how can you continue to look the people in the eye, say, I'm representing you, but I want more of your money as I, we have high fund balances, and we're proud of our high fund balances. We have a double A rating, bond rating, and we're proud of that, and we're going to keep that. It doesn't matter if you can afford food or not. There's a point in time when it comes down to, you look and start restructuring and saying, well, geez, it looks like a 7 percent contingency is all we're going to have for a couple of years as taxes continue to go up, and build a jail. Quit coming back to the taxpayers, as I said, it's a 20-year project now. You were told no on a millage. It should not even be in your capital improvement, saying that, oh, we got to have a millage because we don't want to fund it. It's not, we can't, we don't want to.
Additional public comment? Other business, we have none. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Tunison.
I'm good, Mr. Chair. How's up? Thanks.
Vice Chair Hatfield.
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Rasson.
Yeah, I, one comment is that I do look forward to working with Eric as we move forward. Some of the things you talked about, Dave, earlier about, you know, now we've gotten settled in this process and some things going forward for next year, really excited about that, and working with Eric to accomplish those things. Enjoyed the ribbon cutting at the airport, that was really phenomenal. I'd never even been to the airport. The building is beautiful. The Bombs are such wonderful, generous people, and it was very professional. I just didn't, you know, I'd just never been there and didn't know what to expect, and it was a great experience to see all the people and see all they do there. We also had a revitalized Dalton meeting last week. We so grateful, we probably had 65 to 70 people there, fantastic discussions. The Berry Community Foundation is working with us on a very creative way without doing a community land trust to work with some attorneys and develop some ways that a few of the homes can be put under certain deed restrictions and actually allow them to purchase the homes and the land under market rates, and there's a whole process behind it, and very excited about that. It's a wonderful shift for our community, and things are moving in a really positive way. Then we also have our beautification committee that's just going like crazy now too, so. And last but not least, Dalton College Education Foundation Annual Moose Breakfast. You'll want to put it on your calendar because I make the pancakes. That'll be on November 8th at the Dalton Moose at 8:30. It'll go 8:30 until 11:00. That's it, thank you.
8:30 to 11:00 at the Moose.
Good pancakes.
Okay. Commissioner Colton. Mr. Getty.
Yeah.
Okay. Just a few notes. Tomorrow night is Guys That Give. If you haven't heard of Guys That Give, it's an organization similar to the Women's Giving Circle where different people allow, we allow them to speak and talk about what their project is to better the community. And basically, everybody there donates $100 to that cause, they take a vote on it and do it. So that's tomorrow night. I think the doors open at 5:30. It starts at 6:00. This one's going to be at the Waldorf. The other thing is if you don't have it in your calendar, next week on November 5th is the Berry County Economic Summit with several key speakers coming in to talk about the State of the Union for the county, some of the regional statistics, and national statistics on economics as well. So that's November 5th at the Performing Arts Center in Hastings. You can get tickets online at the Chamber for, I believe they're $20 right now, so that'll go from probably 1 to 4 next week, Wednesday, and hopefully you can all attend that, so. Thank you for your participation today, comments, good information from all. Appreciate that. We'll look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks. Thank you, and we are adjourned.